Have a go on. I'll call this meeting to order with a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now Jim has not joined us yet. It's been a while since we had a meeting, so everybody have a chance to maybe. Anybody care to make a motion?
I will make a motion to accept the minutes for May 24th planning board meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? They were kind of long and tedious and it could have been something different, but it looked pretty good.
Yeah, it did.
Let's see. Jackson isn't here, so we're not going on here. I got the wrong piece of paper.
More detailed, you like that?
I have it here.
Okay.
Get down to, oh, no, it's fine.
Okay. Sure. You use mine.
I'm an I. Mary?
Aye.
Joe Carrery is absent. Barry Becker?
Aye.
John Kaufman?
Aye.
Peter De Angelis?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Next item. We have some old business, and I think we're going to wait on that to see if Jim joins us. And you say he's not going to, although he told me he would, so. It's his loss. This is for him.
I'm only the town clerk.
Not, don't, you're the town clerk, not only, not only. Town clerk. If you give me a dog license, you'll be a great town clerk.
In this situation, I am only your Zoom person.
Right.
Like that.
Okay, so let's go to Josh. Do you have something to present to us? Do you have a big map?
Did you?
He also has little maps. Do you have your big maps with you?
I, I don't have the big map. I'm going to be getting all of the MyLars and everything.
That's unfortunate for you. Everybody have a chance to look at so.
Mm-hmm.
And if you'll notice, he's just adjusting the line. So, under such circumstances, we can normally not do subdivision and do a lot line adjustment. It's not on a county or state highway, so on a town road, so they don't get involved. Any question on what he's doing? Taking 117 feet, it looks like, from your new lot, putting down another one.
Yeah, to keep the 300 frontage.
Right, but you got, then you'll have a lot more on your, for your house.
Yes.
Okay. Just remember, you're going to have to draw it deep because they aren't both in the same names.
Yeah, 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 I have to go, yeah.
Yeah.
I have to inform my attorney, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody's got to draw it. Any questions on this?
No.
It conforms with the requirements of subdivision regulations.
We've got everything that we can see on here, we've done, so.
And then the My, everything's coming as far as the MyLars.
Then you'll have to contact me and I'll sign it when you get it.
The other thing, just so you know, before you, you may want to get ahold of your surveyor from, I guess it's D N O Brian's notice. There's a note that's supposed to be on this map that our, that our, that our subdivision regulations require. So you might want to get, get that on there because that should be on there before it's signed and filed.
Okay.
If you look at section 241-17 of the town code.
Yeah.
Supposed to be a legend put on it or a notation that says these plans are acknowledged by the town of Tustin and for reporting purposes only to represent an exempt lot line adjustment in accord with section 241-17 of the town of Tustin subdivision regulations. Those subdivision approvals required or given, that's what it's supposed to have, that that note is supposed to.
Okay.
Almost a stamp, signed with the same issue.
Yeah, yeah.
So sorry, it was no subdivision at the end.
You got, you got a phone with you?
Yeah.
You want to take a picture of it?
Yes, I do.
How do you see it that way? So, yeah, to try to decipher the finer page.
Find this thing and spend the rest of your life looking for it. So take a picture of this paragraph. You'll see right in the middle of the paragraph using quotes exactly the language that has to be on.
For a second, make sure, perfect. Great, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Do we have a motion on Josh's sub lot line adjustment, rather?
I'll make a motion.
Peter, um, Barry.
Lot line adjustment.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the lot line adjustment for Josh Felderstein and Trevor Tripp.
Can you speak louder? The computer can't hear you.
Ah, good. Is there any further comments? Motion is second. Okay, let's take a vote.
Barry, you have a second? Yeah, Barry's second.
Nice and loud, guys. Pretend like you're a cheerleader. I was.
Say, you come up here and you, you make the hand signals and read deep.
You're funny today.
I'm an I. Mary?
Aye.
Joe is not here. Barry?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Okay, approved. So get to me with the maps, or we can meet each other and bring them, sign. I have the stamps at home.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
I know he has. Okay. Next is. Anything else?
Okay.
Here we go.
We have two things that we wanted Jim here for. He's asking us and we're sending solar farm people on me, and since Ed doesn't answer. About whether, which will give them the C of O for the solar farm and the condition it was in. I just went by, they finally have mowed around the exterior. They had bush hogs the center, roads between the panels a while back. Joe Carrery sent us a letter of his synopsis, which you probably all read already, right?
Mm-hmm.
So Jim wants to know what he, we want him to do, and I don't feel it's really up to us. But we need to do something to try to maintain it in the future. If we get it okay today, what's it going to look like by September 1st?
Correct.
So here's what Joe says. I will not be able to make this month's meeting. I did take a tour of the solar farm. I would like my observations made available at the meeting. Last year at September's meeting, I brought up the solar farm because I had concerns that it was not being maintained. By my observation, there are 12 dead trees. There are about 30 arborvitae's that were not approved and do not meet height requirements and are eaten up by the deer. As for the mowing, it looks as if it was mowed once and the grass looks as if it should be mowed again. In my opinion, the site is not being maintained as it was agreed upon how it should be maintained. So I noticed the grass is growing up under the panels, which is why they got the sheep there last year, but they don't bring them this year. It's too late for them already. And I think that's basically a fire hazard because the grass is going to turn into dry hay shortly, and you put one cigarette butt in it and up it goes. And Amy will be over there as president of the fire department trying to get it out.
I can lend them my goats.
And, yeah, and she can't get to it because there's a black pencil.
Right.
So Jim was looking for our opinion. We have Joe's opinion. Anybody else care to speak?
What exactly are the trees that are, that they planted? Because they all really seem to be kind of drying up and dying.
Well, there's 12 dying ones, but some of them are getting, the spruce are getting new growth at the top, so some did take this last time.
I don't know what, I don't know my trees all that well, but if anybody, you know, Nicolina's old farm on 52 on that Alexandra and David own now, it's a yellow, it's got the highest, most solid tree wall.
Those are also arborvitae's, but the deer like to eat the, the young arborvitae's?
The first set that they put in, whether it was weather, deer, whatever, the second set took really fast and grew into that like.
They grow an average of three feet a year once they are.
Yep.
But they're, they're also a problem for the solar farm because they're going to grow and they're going to shade the panels.
They go up to 60 feet tall.
They grow too quick.
They're fabulous though.
No, but the deer do love to eat them when they're young.
Well, I don't think we're going to see what, what we envisioned for like years to come.
No.
Those trees, it's going to take a long time. And as far as it being a safety hazard, is it that a, an enforcement issue?
Oh, it's Jim's problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I could understand that being.
There's, there's, there was a site plan.
Yes.
And we got to approve.
Oh, well, yeah.
Yes, there was.
Was there a planting schedule or at least a depiction on what?
Yes, there was.
Yes, and they've been planted two and three times.
And.
So I died. I mean, so that's something that if.
We have money in escrow.
Well, and that's something that he can take enforcement action with regard to. If it's on the plan and it's not there, or if it died and needs to be replaced, he's, that clearly he can, he can do. I think he could look at the, at the property maintenance code, which is part of the uniform fire, fire prevention and building code. And because that applies to all different properties, some residential.
Can we, can we have a fire inspector? It might be, it might be something that we can do.
Fire department does.
And other than that, unless there's any conditions that were imposed by planning board in your approval resolution. But I don't, I'm, I don't have backs or I haven't seen any of that, so I don't know.
That's been a long, long.
That's been a long time, right, John?
Yeah.
Barry, I think it was a long time we did this.
Two or three years ago.
Do you believe the resolution is, is fairly vague?
Yeah.
But there, but there might be some, there might be detail on the, on the site plan, what's shown and what, whatever notes might be on it.
We don't have.
We do.
Right, and they weren't, so I think they'll remember that.
Trying to see that, but the thing is, it's going to take years for that to happen.
Yeah.
You know, so to deny him a C O, I think.
Well, you look at what Kevin and Donna Frieda did and how nice their trees look when they cover up their mill.
Oh, this is true.
And it was quick.
Yeah. Well, you know, the other thing, just keep it in mind, it might not help in this instance, but when, when there's something before you guys for approval and you're requiring some planting or buffer zone or something like that, you know, you can require them to, to plant trees of a sufficient height to begin with. You know, they don't have to start with a, with a, with a 18 inch arborvitae. You know, they're fast growing. You could say, put it, start with a five or six foot one and it'll grow even quicker and get there quicker. They're not, those trees are not that expensive compared to other, you know, evergreen species.
And here's shows some trees where I think along, you know, that's the only place they have to have trees. And I know we kept money in escrow when we found.
And I think, John, I remember we said there had to be a specific kind.
Right.
But not, you know, a deciduous tree. It had to be some type of.
They put it mixed.
They mixed. And then remember, some of them died, they replaced them, and then they put more in and they died. And then remember, it was those valleys and everything, they had to flatten it all out.
Yeah, because it was all wood chips from where they.
I think they had to cover it with dirt.
Because they planted them in.
Yeah.
Where they chipped.
I mean, we never required anything along the backside of it either, right?
No.
No.
And they didn't go on up along Laurel Lane, which I thought they were going to. They only did Wood Oak.
Yeah, they only did that.
When you contemplated, somebody contemplated that there was going to be mowing because there's a note on here about after construction is complete, a snake monitor will clear the site before it is mowed. Monitor shall walk in front of the mower during mowing. If it is mowed during active season, to ensure that there are no adverse impacts to individual snakes. Well, I guess we were trying to protect the snakes, not the guy in the mower, huh?
Oh, this timber rattles.
This timber rattles up there.
Licensed timber rattlesnake monitor is under contract for this project for construction and operations. Site contact is Kathy Michelle. Well, she won't be doing it.
Tommy might do it.
Yeah.
I think they mowed without a snake monitor.
I think they did.
Yeah, I'll bet you they did.
That's right. Especially in this heat.
My philosophy, only good snake is the dead snake.
I don't know. I think it's more like.
Well, and, and it says here, on one of the notes here on the aside from the planting showing over there, it does show grass cover beneath and between, beneath and between solar panels to be earned solar farm seed mix on C N C note and shall be maintained for the life of the facility as a stormwater management practice. There's also apparently a slip for this thing, too. So there's supposed to be some maintenance.
Well, what do you, we should do? I mean, I think it's more Jim, but he's asking us to come up with something.
Well, why don't, why don't the board just simply refer, Jim, to the notes on the map in terms of where plantings are supposed to be and that they should be alive, and if they're not, then, then he should, you know, contact them about replacement.
Okay.
And in terms of mowing, there's a note there on the map with regard to mowing and says that should be maintained. So I think maintain certainly implies that, and there's another note about, about having, how you go about cutting it.
Yeah.
So certainly contemplated that that maintain.
Okay.
Cut, so the grass should be cut. That was certainly on the, evident from the face of that. And otherwise, he probably should check to see whether there's any other applicable provisions of the uniform code, particularly the property maintenance provision that would be relevant and, and enforce them.
Well, so I'm taking it, once Jim issues his C O, he doesn't want to deal with it anymore. He doesn't want to enforce.
Well, even if once, even once the C O or C C is, is, is issued, that doesn't mean that, that, that there's no longer requirement for them to maintain the, the, the plantings and to maintain the grass. That continues for the life of the, uh.
Right, so it's a random.
Yeah.
Life of the, of the facility. So it's still enforceable post-C O.
Who's going to do that?
The code enforcement officer, that's.
That's kind of the thing in town is.
You, 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 either you need more help or.
Yeah, I mean, that, you know, they, I mean, it's the, the town has to provide the resources to, to enforce. You're not, you, the planning board are not an enforcement body.
No, we're not.
Well, that's my answer to everything. Every time somebody says we ought to adopt a new law, put something new, make sure somebody's going to be around to enforce it.
Right.
We do it because otherwise it's just going to be somebody else is going to be sitting there in the audience complaining at a meeting. Why don't you do something about that? And the code says you're supposed.
Ken? Ken, Ken, Ken Klein, Ken, Andy Bane. I don't know. I mean, you know, I, yeah, he's a good one. Okay, Mary. I, I agree with Ken Klein. I really feel that, you know, at this point, I think it's come back to us a couple of times, if I recall. About the mowing, it's about the trees, it's about this, it's about that.
We've said Jim needs to do it.
Jim needs to do it.
But I, I don't think you, you can just go on and on and not issue these people the C O.
Right.
Sooner or later, they got to get their C O.
Well, I don't know what the absence of the C O, what harm it's done for them because they're obviously.
They operated anyway.
Yes.
Theoretically, they shouldn't have been operating without, without.
But they've been running it right along.
Right.
It's online.
Yeah.
You know.
And I know the fire department at one point went up there, they did all the tests and things like that, right? So I know that was a concern, but they went up. Right, Amy? So I, I mean, I think it falls on, unfortunately, Jim.
It is the lack of mowing, a fire hazard, something that the fire department may be able to enforce.
Do you have, do they have?
Fire department doesn't have enforced, but they don't have any enforcement.
So at this point, it's real. No, it's, it's Jim, yeah. So I have a question. So if Jim, if, if Jim goes ahead and does this, and he, either he doesn't have help or does have, or he does it himself, how enforceable, I mean, they can keep doing it, keep doing it. Can, I'm asking Ken Klein. Can they, can he say, okay, enough is enough, and come back to like the town board or whatever and say, okay, enough, you got to shut it down. This is a major fire hazard.
It's, you're not really, you're not really in a position to shut it down. What you, the, the progression.
Yeah.
Would be, first to give a notice they're in violation and a, and a direction to cure it by a certain period of time. If they don't do that, then he could, then he could file accusatory instruments in the justice court, accusing them of the violation of the different code provisions. I mean, that's a violation of our, of our zoning law. To not comply with a condition of approval. It may, there also may be, as I said, some uniform fire prevention, building code violations that may be applicable. So you prosecute, first you try to prosecute him in justice court. My mindset about that is it's not about getting him into court and wanting to whack him with a fine because the, the object is to gain compliance. Comply, you know, if I'm prosecuting in justice court, you show me compliance and we'll talk about either withdrawing the charges or some nominal.
Right.
Disposition. If all of that fails, because, you know, sometimes the fine is just, is just the cost of doing business. It's cheaper to pay the damn fine.
Exactly.
Why? So at that point, then the town board has to make a decision. Do they want to put resources in it? Because instead of, instead of prosecuting somebody in justice court where all they can do is basically impose a fine, then you have to bring a lawsuit in Supreme Court, state law.
Yeah.
Where a, where a court that has jurisdiction and authority to impose injunctive. And that's where you get a court to enjoin them and compel them, direct them to do that, comply, and, and if they fail to do that, then somebody can be held in contempt and put in jail. I mean, that's the progression. But it's time and it's money.
Right.
Yeah.
And then for the town.
Legal team to fight.
And the legal team, and then you would have to get fees back, whatever, you know, because you're going, you're not complying.
So who wants to make the motion that everything Mr. Klein says becomes our resolution right today?
Thing?
So, so we can't even, obviously, even lack of C O, nothing to hold over their head as they're operating, so.
Yeah, I, you know, in fact, I, you would, you would think the absence of the C O might be an impediment to them if they were selling the facility.
Maybe that's what's happening, but.
I, I don't know. I mean, because they sold the Bethel facility.
Right. And they're, they're really hard on getting the C O right now.
Then, then the answer should be.
This guy has been calling and calling, and I said, have you looked at? He said, no. And then I think the mowing around the outside has occurred because he said it's supposed to be, and it's had not been. Apparently, he pushed them to do it.
I mean, the big issues are the mowing and, and, and whatever, dead screening, right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So I think the resp, I, I think maybe the thing to do is deal with it this way, from your perspective as a planning board. Adopt a motion. Amy, you get, we'll take this, okay? Because I only, I, I never can say the same thing twice, the same thing.
Well, I have it on the recorder.
Adopt a motion that, 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 that the planning board recommends to the code enforcement officer that he contact the developer and request that they, that they comply with the planting requirements, meaning replace any dead vegetation that was required on the face of the site plan. And that they mow the facility now and regularly as required and contemplated on the face of the approved site plan. And that he, and that he review the property maintenance code to determine whether there are any other violations, and if so, take appropriate enforcement action. I don't know what else you guys can tell them.
No, I don't either.
We'd like to make that mo, into a motion, what Mr. Klein has just said.
I'll make that into a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to try to get the solar farm in better condition. Any comments further?
I have a question.
Okay.
I wasn't around when this was.
All right.
Done, all done. Doesn't he need to carry insurance? And if so, how did he get the insurance without a C O?
I don't know.
Yeah. It's not your need to C O in order to get the insurance.
There's no, there's no town requirement that he have.
Or you think you would want to protect.
You would think so.
Yeah.
You would think so.
Usually, any piece of property, you'd need a C O.
You would think. Unless, unless they.
Well, they're getting some, some insurance until that comes through.
Are they requesting a C O at this time?
Oh, yes.
Oh, they are?
Yes.
Okay.
I've been getting multiple calls, so this guy.
C O until.
I mean, now's your, now's this opportunity. I'll be happy to issue the C O when you.
Right.
Yeah. Do whatever planting needs to be done to cure whatever has died. And mow the facility in its entirety.
Maybe they're not telling us something, and that's why they need the C O, so.
I don't, I don't know, who bought Bethel, another?
A company in California. And they owned it, so, you know, they may be selling this one, and they didn't build it to keep. They built it for investment, to sell to investors.
Yeah, the, the developers of these sites, they tend, they sell them. They don't, they don't, their real money isn't made on even, on electric generation or on, or on, even necessarily, there's so much to sale, they hope to recoup their costs by selling the facility to someone who's then wants to make money off the generation of electric.
Right.
Sold the credits.
Yeah, it's the credits.
There's credits.
Right, 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 right.
Yep, there's, everybody wants those credits. Any other comments? Okay, time for a vote. I vote aye. Mary?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Carried. Your butt gear solar farm.
Okay, good.
Okay, now we have a letter from Mr. Wyatt asking us not to look at downtown business, but he doesn't set the planning board agendas, so.
Nope.
Here goes. When we approved the 14 and 26 area avenue development, we were looking at the parking, and he drew us bigger buildings, so we knew how much parking to put in was our thing. Then he took the site plan and now wants to build the garages and the new house closer to the road, like where the old one was. And Jim has been hesitant to issue him a building permit for fear he's violating something. But downtown business has a 40-foot setback, which is totally stupid for Main Street. Half the buildings would be out in the middle of the river. Erie Avenue, the beginning of it, they'll be on the railroad track and put them on stilts over the train. There are reasons that we don't need to do this, and Mr. Klein has a whole bunch of different ways that we can approach it. And we don't usually go this route because we don't really want to not follow our zoning fairly strictly, but we have leeway when we need to. It was written into the zoning when we did it back for the 12 zoning.
So, all right, so that, this all depends on the nature of what's going on. In any instance, even if it's simply a question where they need a building permit and they need no approval from you guys, if they're in certain of the districts, including the downtown business, but also the G R and the R B district, if there are two or more dwellings located within 200 feet of the proposed site on the same side of the street, within the same block, then the proposed dwelling can have a front yard that's, that's, uh, doesn't, it doesn't have to be any greater than the average setback of those existing dwellings. So if you got the, you got the site here on, on, that fronts on the street, let's say you have a, you have a single family house here that's, that's 10 feet off the, off the, uh, off the street, you have one over on this side of it that's seven feet off. So somewhere between 10 and, 10 and seven feet is where the setback can be for that. And Jim has the authority, that allows Jim that authority to do that. If the circumstances that, if that's not feasible, then it can come here for a waiver by you guys, even though it's not otherwise subject to review or approval, but you guys could have the authority to, to, to waive that for good cause. Good cause is whatever a majority of this board determines good cause to be when it's presented. I mean, something has to be presented. It'd be nice, I'd like to do it. If you got the room, you should comply.
Right.
But a lot of these lots are all old lots that won't pre-exist zoning.
Right.
And like Ken says, you know, down on Main Street, you'd be in the river if you pushed everybody back.
Exactly.
Forty feet.
Sure.
Over here, you might be in the, in the, in the train tracks if you push somebody 40 feet. So there could well be good cause in that circumstance. So that's one instance. The other instances arise when there's, um, something that's actually before you guys in term, in terms of using, getting a special use of. You guys have the authority under our town zoning. You guys have the authority under our town zoning law to waive. With any requirements that it would be applicable to a special use. That can include area dimensional stuff, setbacks. Parking, I mean, the whole gambit is within your discretion, but there's a, there's a process under our zoning law. They have to re- they have to request a waiver and they have to make a showing.
Mm hmm.
Again, it's not, but it's not as, I don't think it's as high of a burden as going to the ZBA for a variance.
Mm hmm.
That is the other alternative, is you can always go to the ZBA to get a setback there. So th- those in a nutshell are, are the, are the ways that, that you can address the situation.
So, so what you're saying, he can technically build out as far as that white house that's next.
Yeah, and the brown house that he took down was about the same footage.
That brown house was set back a little.
Yeah, but the porch was the same.
Yeah, it was the same.
Okay.
It wasn't the whole house, but he's trying to push out that few feet to match the white house, basically. Give him himself a little more space. That was a small house.
Well.
Can we work from the plan that we had initially?
I don't have that.
I do. That's why I brought all these.
Files on, um. The old Kelly House that he just took down.
Yeah, he's looking more, right now, he's looking more at the two garages that were on this plan. That were also going to then be close to the road. I don't know why he has to think for garages, but his other house, he built a three-car garage. Just garage he's proposing, that's the garage he's proposing. These are the two existing houses that were there. This one's been taken down. Now he's showing you how he wants to head on to it and bringing this one out, it's close to the road, it's the other one, and everything will be as close. The next door neighbor is a couple of feet more. But that's that side of the street. And we were looking at, now you've got another thing that I thought of, it's lot coverage because of his parking, it considers it lot coverage. But he's using gravel, so it'll be permeable. But we may need to waive lot coverage amount with the parking also.
Just the union?
Now, the unions over here. This is where the house was.
Cleared the land. All right.
And then on the other end is, uh, what's her name?
Heidi Snyder.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we were looking at this parking space wise because of how big is, how many apartments and whatever he was proposing. And, uh.
But this is.
Yeah, and that, and this is going to be replaced a little closer to the road than it was, but the same as the other house. At least the whole side of the street will be consistent.
Mm hmm.
And there's room there for a sidewalk.
Barely, we park on them, but they're there.
Yeah, just like the Blue Stones, the, yeah, yeah, everybody always parks on.
I mean, this house, we have some bushes there, and every time I go into the church, I park kind of between the bushes here, off on them, on over the sidewalk. Because if you don't, you're sticking out in the road.
Mm hmm.
But we, that sidewalk's been parked on historically when the school was there by the teachers and students for as long as the school's been there.
Well, question, if you, if he's looking at doing all this other construction. Getting it back far enough so that you couldn't have a sidewalk and the parking on the street.
That'll never happen because this house is still there.
Mm hmm.
And Heidi's house is there. You have some parking, but it makes us very narrow.
It's me. Okay.
Because the church was concerned with that when they, um.
They have obviously solved their problem because, well, they have a big function, they have to sign up in his driveway that you can go in the back and park behind the church. So they've obviously gotten their insurance that he wanted, and he was, Mr. White was willing that they use these spaces when he was not using them. If they provided insurance. Which they were balking at, but at this point, I think they found out the rider is not that expensive because he's letting them do it.
And there will be public parking all along here, as there has been currently.
Yeah. Here, there's plenty of room because the fence is back, the street's very wide. Here, the street's a little narrow, then it gets a little wider down there.
So there still will be a path, a walking path.
And that's the sidewalk on the other side of the street. So, you know, if somebody's parked over that, when you walk down the other side to the church.
And it appears to be, like, you know, again, you know, he's got plenty of parking behind there.
Yeah, he's done that well for us, so.
Yeah.
I think it. Interest of that he did such a nice job on getting as much parking as possible.
Yeah.
Maybe we should be a little lenient and let it build close to the road instead of over the tracks on stilts. It'll be interesting to park your car on a stilted garage.
I think they've frowned a lot.
I think, yeah. Well, Bamp is pretty strong though, Barry.
All railroad traffic.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, if we were talking like big front yards there and houses set back, but with that.
Everybody is the same.
Yeah, it's all historical anyway.
All the way to the church parking lot, they're all basically the same.
Yeah. And I, I think whatever he's putting up is supposed to kind of blend in with that type of architecture.
We hope so. We don't guarantee anything.
No.
If he came here for, for a special use permit, to an extent, you may be able to, but there's no aesthetic standard in our zoning law that says you have to build. To a particular style.
Yeah.
Well, that's usually in the subdivision.
Right. Or if you consider it's all, uh, historical.
Yeah, and those, and those are usually provisions that the developer.
Right.
Puts in because he wants to control.
enforced by the town, by the other people.
No, they're private, private covenants, so.
Yeah.
So would we be out of line if we tell Jim that it's okay with us if, uh, he go ahead and issue building permits with this? Less setback and maybe more lot coverage if necessary, according to the plan we received. Back when, in, uh, twenty-one, April of twenty-one.
Yep.
What do we think about that?
Once the, I'd be looking to put in their retail and apartments.
Yeah.
Any more, because I thought it was to be using the existing house.
Well, the one he took down, so. Another one is going to be doing some changes too. If you look at this, you'll see. Uh, fourteen, he says, he's got his first floor and then twenty-four, twenty-six, he says he's going to renovate and expand.
Residential, commercial, two-story structure. Fourteen, he says, is going to be a new residential two-story.
So, you know, he's already taken it down and.
Right.
He wants to put back, so I guess we were told all these things, we just didn't pay good attention.
No, I think we did, but as to, um.
We didn't realize we were going to approve some of this, uh, building.
He doesn't own that white house, right? Oh, he does own that white house, okay.
And he's already opened that for retail. He opened it last September. I was very shocked on Labor Day when I went in there, somebody was selling stuff. And then I found, according to our resolution, he had the right to do it, so.
That's the sheriff's house.
Yeah.
I think they moved down.
Oh, yeah, there's retail in there.
No, but I mean, like.
I wouldn't blame them. I doubt they had much trade, it's, um, no place to go in.
But the, uh, what, the structure of the White House is basically going to stay the same. He's not, that.
Looks like he's putting, um, if you're looking at the front. Still, looks like he's putting something on the left side up according to these hatch marks.
Okay.
Like, uh. Eight, no, that's, that's the setback. Shows what the size was before, but it doesn't specify the size after. It's thirty-eight feet, four inches on the floor. Doesn't include this. Looks like about eight, ten feet. Let me map, see, you know.
So what do, what do we, what is our responsibility here at this point? What, nothing? Okay.
But we have the power to fix the situation.
And the situation would be?
That he's not able to get his building permits and go on with this at the current time.
Oh.
We can fix it or go to the zoning board to get it fixed. He goes to the zoning board. It's going to be another month before he gets there, and they're going to set a public hearing, he's going to send out four or five hundred notices. Have the public hearing and do it. We could do it and get it over with for the person. Now, he's been, he's been at this for ye- over a year now, so.
I, I was told that he, he, the, the whole gripe was that we originally approved him. Build a bigger building, whereas I remember, well, it was all supposed to be on the original footprint. Correct?
Right.
We're just, we're just like a shed dormer on the side.
Yeah.
And, and now what we're, we're saying is that we're going to say it's all right for him to head out for the.
Well, he did show us all these changes on this thing back then. They're on the map that we were given.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. He took a look at it. You can see the addition to the house, you can see the new footprint and the old footprint.
Uh huh.
So we just, we were looking at size to determine parking, and we didn't really look at.
Placement.
But the, but the impression he, that he walked away with and, and validly could walk away with from what he was provided. Was that he could do this.
Yeah, and he got a letter saying he could do it, so that's why we've never pushed this.
I mean, you guys jump because I'm not, I'm not looking to put words in anybody's mouth or, or drive this anywhere. But what I'm hearing is that there's a, the, the sense of, of the board is that. This should be okay.
Yeah.
So maybe the way to approach it is to say that. Pursuant to section five dot zero dot two, paragraph five. It looks like, for the most part, you're building something that matches. Setback of existing buildings on the, on, within two hundred feet on the same block, number one, and to the extent that it might not. The board feels that the circumstances because of the, of the configuration of the lots and, and the unique. Circumstances because of the location of the railroad tracks to the rear are such that it warrants a waiver to such extent that it's not. You know, consistent with the two, you know, the, the existing structures within two hundred feet.
Mm hmm.
Maybe that's, maybe that's the approach. Because it says here that this provision may be waived by the planning board for good cause.
And they have, and we do have good cause.
That's what I think I'm hearing you guys say.
I mean, someone's.
You know, this garage, he could move back, but it's one more garage. Does it matter? Or he could put parking spaces where that is and push it back a little bit, but. I think he's trying to get the street to look the same, and he had said he was putting in sidewalks and so on, so that way it would be straight down.
Mm hmm.
So maybe that's. Look best.
Can we ask the CEO's designs or anything like that?
He's, no, no, it's already, didn't they already send it or now?
No, that's, that's up to Jim.
Yeah.
He's got it in Jim's building permit. I think our part of asking for that is passed.
Since we already approved everything. Yeah, so. So then we should make a motion for that resolution, Ken?
If that's what you want to do, yeah.
We'll take, take a vote and see if we have anybody say comments against.
Okay.
Parking violations with this new design that's going on there.
Any what violations?
Parking. Parking is like. Like the issue.
No, because he's got twenty-eight parking spaces in this.
Yeah, he has one. I remember that was an issue, I think.
That was the one thing that you guys actually.
Thought we were being.
Yeah, right.
Place the driveways such a manner that they were safe in and out.
Right, because all the, before it was over here too close to the.
Yeah, he's got, and he's got it, he's got it set, so there's one for ingress and it goes through.
And this, this is the way closer to the corner of the traffic, so that's the entry, which is better, over, it's better to come out.
And you got better site distance away from the intersection with Bridge Street.
Yeah. Let's see if you're coming out, making a left, you wouldn't be far here, though, you've got lots, lots to do it.
Yeah.
And going in is not a problem.
Mm hmm.
So I think he basically had a good plan. Just encroaches on a few things that zoning didn't like.
And everything he's doing needs code for that.
Yeah. So, Amy, how much of that resolution Ken just said, did you get down? Or you want him to start over?
I got the one down for the mowing. I have my recorder on, so I didn't write it.
Okay, so you have it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, anybody want to make a motion to take the statement by Mr. Klein and make it into a resolution? I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, any further comment?
No, you want to take a vote on it?
We think we're all kind of backed into, this is about the best way out.
Mm hmm.
I vote aye. Mary.
Aye.
Uh, Barry.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye.
Okay, motion is carried. Uh, we'll let Jim go ahead and, uh, issue a building permit if he's happy with other things. Make him enforce a forty-foot setback.
Just the size of the building?
No.
The resolution, it says a little bit bigger.
Uh, can you say, as shown on the proposed. Plot presented? So let's change it, get that in there, okay, Amy? Okay, um, I make a motion that, on Crystal's suggestion. The town close. That we make a, a resolution to. Let Jim know that we're okay with the size as presented on the plot for the parking that we looked at in twenty-one. You know, like a two-car garage. Uh, the, the house he's replacing, it shows how much closer it's going to be to the road and so on. And also, we did not mention lot coverage. Because I think the parking lot is part of lot coverage, and it's going to have more coverage probably than allowed in the zoning, so I'd also want to. Make that waived part of the waiver.
Sorry. You have to prove that amendment here is Lucian.
You were going to say something.
No, you, you're.
Well, okay.
With what you were doing, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor. Have a second. Okay. I don't think we need to comment anymore. Anybody have any comments on this one?
No.
Okay, I'm an aye, Mary.
Aye.
Joe, oh, Joe is there, I keep calling him. Barry. John. Peter.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried to emphasize approximately as shown on the plot presented.
One more note for your meeting, um, you cannot hold a meeting next month. As normally scheduled, because there's a special election, so if you're going to hold a meeting next month, you need to set a different day. Because August twenty-third is, um. Bill Dado.
And I know we have.
Just not today, I went, we have an election.
To fill the vacancy for the, for the.
Yeah.
Congress, congressional.
Correct. So that is on the twenty-third.
What are they going to waste on that?
Yeah.
So that's on the twenty-third.
Black dividers.
So September twenty-third of this year is a Friday.
August twenty-third.
Oh, I'm sorry, August, geez, I'm rushing away. August twenty-third, so.
I know we. I know we should have something from Packer on an in-town lot subdivision. He wanted to bring it in this month, but guess Jocelyn told him no.
Okay.
Cause I told him he was late. I said, if she'll take it, it's okay with me, but I don't think she will.
Can we push it off to the following week? August thirtieth?
Why not? That's.
Can we do that?
You can schedule, reschedule a meeting to whenever you want. I can't guarantee that when you guys shift to a date. I can't guarantee my appearance. But that doesn't mean I.
Yeah.
Your meeting.
It appears all we'll have is, at this point, is the simple subdivision unless the. Uh, camp comes back in or something, you know?
Uh, is the thirtieth open?
Yes.
I won't be in town, but I'll try my best to.
You should just skip and go straight to September.
Yeah, but I I would say that we could do that, but. You're gonna have Jocelyn put Packer off another month.
Can we do it that Monday? What happens in here on Monday? I mean, you can do it on the thirtieth, I'm just saying. So.
It's like Labor Day weekend, this is.
Yeah, it's almost Labor Day weekend, Labor Day weekend, so the.
Next.
Set, yeah, that's following, yeah.
So what about that Monday, the twenty-second?
That's used to be our meeting date.
Yeah.
It's uh.
Is there anything going on on the twenty-second?
Or you can do the twenty-four. The twenty-second.
Let's do the twenty-second. Do the twenty-second. Is everybody available twenty-second? Oh, oh. Oh, you'll zoom in, though.
Yeah, we're leaving that morning. To travel to Milwaukee.
That's exciting.
That's nice.
Tampa, so it will take me two days to get there. But, you know, we're gonna be stopping around five, six o'clock.
So do you want to?
So I should be able to zoom in at seven-thirty.
Can you, are we okay with twenty-second? John? Barry?
Twenty-second.
Monday? Twenty-second?
That's fine.
Okay, it's fine.
I've, I'm, I'm gonna have to check this because they've got new rules on on. What a member, a board member can and can't do remotely.
Right.
Well.
Oh.
They they adopted some new law on that, so let me, let me.
I didn't just come on Zoom tonight.
Yeah, it might be a real good thing.
Are you sure, for sure, for sure, that you're gonna have someone for next month?
Well, he wanted to come this month.
Okay.
But he didn't have it quite ready yet.
Okay, so let us know, because I have to, I have to put that notice, has to go in the paper.
Right.
Because it's a change of meeting.
If we call and they're not gonna be here.
If we're not gonna be here, I won't be here then either, I'll go away on vacation.
But we don't know what could come in within the two weeks of it, so.
So.
I'd like to cancel it, yes.
You wanna cancel it?
I'd like to.
September.
Why can't he have to decide?
The twenty-second.
Okay.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Let's do the twenty-second. Let's reset it at that. So we'll set it at the twenty-second then.
Twenty-second at seven-thirty? Okay, now.
August twenty-seventh.
So we will put Monday, August twenty-second at seven-thirty, I open a notice in the paper. I'll take care of that. And um, and um, I'll make a motion.
The good motion, to adjourn.
To adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.